Good morning, good afternoon, good evening, wherever you might be. My name is Marva B. I am the CEO and founder of Black Link Magazine and we are everywhere. So we are so excited to be here and to have Mr. Derek Avery with us. So Derek, welcome to Black Link Magazine.
Thank you so much. I'm happy to be here, excited. I love your platform. I love what you're doing for our people and hey, I'm excited to be here to talk about whatever we need to talk about.
Thank you so much for that. I appreciate that. Yeah, we just, we love doing what we do and we try to do our best. So for our people and our culture. So let's go ahead and get started in the interview. So go ahead and introduce yourself to my audience. Let them know who you are and what you do.
Perfect, perfect. Well, my name is Derek Avery by trade. I'm a real estate developer. That's what I do in my career. Right now, I'm actually taking that a step further. I'm running for office now in Dallas County. So I'm running for Dallas County Commissioner in District Three. There's a 38-year incumbent who's been in that seat and we just want to see progress. Sometimes you have to pass the torch, you know, we can, sometimes we stay in leadership positions too long and we have to allow people with a new vision to take what's already been built and build on top of that. So on the development side, you know, people ask me what qualifies me. I literally build communities from the ground up. Residential, commercial, mixed use, all of it. So we're working on some really good projects right now. A couple of them you may hear about nationally soon. We've just been keeping it under wraps, but definitely we're doing everything. We believe in revitalization without gentrification and that's extremely important to me, but hey, that's, that's what I do and we're looking, most people at this point in their career don't step into politics because, you know, they'll say, well, you can make way more money, you know, just doing your business, but the leadership that I can bring is something that I really want to do now versus later on in my career, when you feel a calling to do something, you have to go ahead and do it right now. So that's what we're doing.
Yeah. Congratulations on that. Congratulations on running and I wish you nothing but the best and you're gonna be alright. It's gonna be alright.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
You know, going back to, you know, you can make more money or whatever, but I think it's sometimes, you know, a lot of, it's not about the money. It's about building and it's about helping others. And that's what our platform stands for is to give back. And it sounds like that's what's more important to you is just to give back. It wasn't, it's not about the dollar sign. Of course, we all like to get, you know, have our coins or whatever, but it's about also giving back to our communities and building them up, which really needed, you know, we need people. And then we need, like you said, fresh faces, fresh ideas, things are ever changing, you know, and bring some, you know, changes to what has already been built. So kudos to you for that as well. Let's talk about your growing up. You grew up in Houston, I believe, in the third ward. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. So I'm, I'm from H-Town. I was born in third ward, went to church in third ward my whole life. Then we moved to southwest Houston, specifically moved to Aleve. And I always say that because we call Aleve the SWAT. So it's southwest Aleve, Texas. And so there's an interesting double entendre with the SWAT reference, you know, it's an acronym, but also, you know, you might've seen the SWAT team there a few times, but you know, being from Houston, it, it really prepared me for being in Dallas and you know, I love my city. I love everything about it. I love the culture and the cities are actually pretty similar. A lot of the music is similar and the culture is pretty similar. So it's an opportunity to bring some of that that I grew up in. So it was interesting in third ward, just seeing the church that I grew up in, we started a nonprofit where we actually started building houses for people in the community. We created an adult education school where people can go to for free. Cause at that time, there was about 77% of the neighborhood didn't have a GED, which I mean, that's extremely high. And so one of those acute needs was to make sure that, you know, this nonprofit is with Southeast Houston Community Development Corporation. So not only were we building houses and remodeling commercial property, we also were educating folks and part of it, we did ESL classes, we did Spanish classes, we did basic computer and advanced computer classes. And it was really, it was really interesting. It was rewarding. That's how I really got to learn and, you know, just being, watching third ward was amazing. But being adjacent to fourth ward was one of the reasons that I became a developer, a real estate developer is because I watched it gentrify in all the wrong ways. And it happened to third ward as well. And so and I wa, I watched how the demographics changed. I watched how they renamed the neighborhood. I mean, no one calls it fourth ward anymore. It's called midtown. And even to the point of it was a original Freedman's Town. And even to the point where the bricks that were laid in the streets were laid by freed people, you know, our people. Someone didn't get the memo when, you know, the last, one of the last demolitions happened and they missed the historical marker. And they ended up, the bricks ended up in the landfill. And they did, I mean, it's, I, I tell the story when I, when, when people ask me to speak because it's so, it's so connected to how things can go wrong if you don't have developers that look like us at the table, making sure we're thoughtful about our community. So growing up seeing that and hearing how outraged our community was about that, but just seeing how callous people were about our history, that's what drove me to be a developer and really be the kind of developer that our community needs. And one of my mentors is actually from Tulsa, Oklahoma. And so I know that piqued their interest and he's, you know, he's from North Tulsa. And so one of the, I got to learn about Black Wall Street very early. I mean, you got my Black Wall Street shirt on because that's my inspiration for wanting to become a developer because I, in 1921, can you imagine that people, our people without help from outside forces, developed a town that was thriving?
Yes.
And we did it in 1921. So what that tells me that there's, there is nothing that should stop us from being able to do it now. But because we have that history where we have this fearfulness of building things of our own because they're typically, they typically get destroyed. But I want to bring that hope and those solutions because we can actually do it. And I want to rebuild Black Wall Street all over the country.
Yeah, that is amazing. Like, um, you, you just never know, small world, small world. So yeah, shout out also Oklahoma and Black Wall Street. And you're right, like people are afraid. They want to do it, but they're afraid to do it. You leave Houston, you move to Dallas and you're still interested and you're still building in the community of Dallas. Is that correct?
Yes.
Third areas?
Correct. So whenever I go to a city, any, any new city I go to, I always go to MLK Boulevard to see what it looks like. Because in my mind, if we think about, you know, the legacy of Dr. King, there's always an MLK in every city. And my thought was this should be in every city, the most thriving part of town. It should be where all of our black commerce comes together, where we gather on Sundays, we gather on the weekends, you know, we hang out. So I got to Dallas, I went there and I was, you know, I looked around, I noticed that it was a lot of vacant lots everywhere. This was about 2014 when I moved to Dallas full-time. I was going back and forth, you know, 2013, but you know, I just noticed, I said, man, this is interesting because a few years ago, when I was doing some logistics work, I worked, you know, I was a logistics analyst and during Hurricane Rita, they relocated us to Dallas.
Right.
And my boss, who doesn't look like us, the one instruction he gave us, he said, never go below I-30 in Dallas. He said, don't go to that other side of town. You'll, bad things will happen to you. And I was like, well, that's an interesting thing to say. But I didn't have any knowledge. That was probably about 2009. I had no knowledge of anything. I just, look, I was there to work and I followed instructions and we were, we were up in Frisco and whatnot. And so I thought that was weird, but then I knew some of my friends that lived here. And so when I first moved here and was visiting, you know, went straight to MLK and I noticed, I was like, this isn't what he described. I mean, is it perfect? No. Are there a lot of vacant lots? And that part was kind of confusing. And I was like, well, there's not a lot of businesses, but there are some. And then I really started paying attention. I said, the State Fair of Texas is at the end, end of MLK Street. And I said, so we have the place where everyone comes to, they have, they have to drive down MLK. And it terminates into the State Fair. And then I looked, I looked at Atlanta Street and I said, Atlanta Street, that goes straight into Deep Ellum, which goes straight into downtown. I'm two minutes from downtown. And I said, no, some, some, something doesn't make sense here. And then I got to the intersection of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and Malcolm X Boulevard and I lost it. I was like, this is the craziest intersection. I was like, this is where everything needs to happen. And so I really started doing some research and saying, I said, this is where I have to develop. This is it. And then I drove around and I saw South Boulevard and Park Row and it reminded me of McGregor Street in, in Houston because those are where, you know, your wealthy doctors, lawyers and business owners lived, wealthy black ones. And it was the same. I mean, you have the same architecture that are in, that's in Swiss Avenue, you know, where the folks that don't look like us live. And I'm like, but it's right here in South Dallas. You have this beautiful, you know, one block off of MLK, but then you don't have the most thriving part of the city. And I said, this is it. This is where I have to develop. And then I drove and I saw parts of Oak Cliff and I saw Redbird and I was like, this is crazy. And so I looked at the mall. I was like, this mall should be a hot mall. And then the other, the other area I saw, I said, I said, okay, I see Redbird. I see South Dallas. And then I said, over here about a zoo. You know, the Dallas Zoo, I mean, should be thriving as well because you have, you're right off the freeway. You have the zoo. There's a lot of, and then you have one of the best high schools in America, you know, Townview, right there. And I said, okay, those three areas have got to be the next areas that it makes sense. And so I called all my, all my homies that, you know, look like us. And I said, hey, I remember what happened in Houston. And I said, if we don't act right now, these property values are gonna quadruple and, you know, quintuple, all of those things. I said, if you buy now, we start developing in our neighborhood, then, you know, we'll be able to one, control how development happens and make sure it's for us. But also we'll make sure that we can, we can put the things there that everyone in the community wants without displacing folks and without, you know, changing the name of the neighborhood, you know, we don't want it to be So Dal or something, you know, South Dallas is South Dallas, you know, you have plenty of neighborhoods that have names and historic meaning. So, so I started building houses and everyone told me I was nuts. I mean, told me I was absolutely insane for building a house in South Dallas and the price point cracks me up. So it took me a couple of years. No one would finance me. The appraisers wouldn't. They said, I, I can't even appraise a house over there. I don't even know what numbers to give it because there weren't a lot of for-profit folks building houses. It was mostly nonprofits, which we need that. But I was like, no, there are people who are from South Dallas that want to move back, but they have to have the housing stock that they could get somewhere else. So I said, well, if I build something here that's for a price point, you can't get anywhere else. You know, with, you know, I think people would show up, you know, judging by the history and my experience in other places. And so people were like, no one's moving to South Dallas. That's crazy, dude. You are insane. And I was like, okay, maybe, maybe I am. I don't know. But same thing with over behind the zoo in Oak Cliff, same deal. And then that first house that we, I just had a rendering done of the house, which is just the digital picture of what it will look like.
Right.
And I had my broker friend post it. And well, actually he listed the house for the price point that, you know, we had come to and it was just $250,000. It wasn't something egregious. I mean, now it's now, it sounds extremely cheap for what they're getting.
Right.
But I, I said, 250, we keep it there. That way it's enough that, you know, we'll do fine. But also it's affordable still.
Yes.
For what you're getting. And I said, I think people are gonna buy this. Well, he called me the next day cussing me out. I mean, just going off and I was like, what happened? What we doing wrong? He was like, my phone won't stop ringing. He got 300 phone calls the next day. And so it sold 10 more houses. And then, you know, the, the crazy person that I was, all of a sudden I became an expert overnight. And that's when I started speaking on panels and people started flying me places to come talk about affordable housing. So it's a, that was kind of the pivotal moment that, you know, that changed. Now I've been doing this for a while, but that was the moment that all of a sudden it's like, okay, maybe, maybe, maybe he's right.
You know, sometimes we just have to go with our first mind and, and we always talk about, I know I always talk about when I'm speaking to people is that we can't let distractions and people sway us from what we really feel deep down inside. And you really felt it like, okay, maybe I am crazy, but this is where I feel it needs to be. And then look, 300 calls right later. Amazing, amazing. So let me, let me ask you this. What, what are you telling people? Or what is the advice that you're giving people in this business, in this realm of things? Cause we don't, we don't get to talk to a lot of people that look like us that are doing what you're doing, right? And how do you deliver that message to us, you know, about what you're doing, why you're doing it? And how even they can get in it to do it and be successful?
Absolutely. One, I always tell people, the first thing I tell people with real estate and particularly with real estate development, there is no competition. I don't look at, I don't look at people as competitors. I look at people as, you know, co, co collaborators because I'm, let's say you want to develop something. And I say, hey, I'm gonna call you because I'm building on, on Scott Street. And I say, hey, I'm buying this lot. Can you buy the one next door and build, build your style of house? So I build mine. Those things help each other. It's not a competitive thing, you know, well, could we bid on the same property? Possibly. But let's say I win the bid and you're like, dang, I lost it. Go buy the property across the street and vice versa. And that's how I always look at it. And I tell people, I say, one, I like to help people so that we have more people in the game. I can't build every house, nor do I want to. My company is there to develop what we're supposed to develop, but we have to do it in tandem with, with other people. And so if we have more people that look like us, then we do it. So I really, I open my books, I open everything. I'm very open. Because to me, if, if I don't approach this authentically and tell people about the losses that I've taken and the successes, then I'm not, I'm not being real. I'm not being real about it. So I tell people, I, you know, I took a major L. I took an $80,000 L on a project. But I use that as, you know, a cautionary tale of how to deal with folks because for me, I'm never concerned about dealing with my own people, even though I've been burned, but I've been burned by some of everybody.
That's right.
And that doesn't deter me from working with people because a lot of times we get that mentality is like, well, you can't work with your own people because no, no, no. You do a better job screening your own people who you work with and you build genuine relationships. Cause one thing that, that I didn't do very well, and I like to be honest about it, is I thought I had it, you know, I came up here and I was like, well, I know what I'm doing. I can build anything and all of that. And so I said, okay, I'm gonna hire, you know, this brother and that brother, but I didn't do my normal due diligence. I was just like, man, I got this. Well, some brothers saw me as an ATM. And, you know, I can't, I, I can't be mad at it because I didn't do my normal process. So for me, it's more about, okay, let's form a genuine relationship so that I can guide people into missing those pitfalls. So anyone that wants to be a developer and wants to get into development, I encourage them to do so. And I tell them, okay, you don't have to be rich. I didn't, I didn't start out in this thing wealthy. I started with nothing. When I say I got it out the mud, literally, like I build houses on the ground. That's probably a little muddy. So I cashed out my 401K and I give people, man, I have had a 401K. I didn't have that much in it. But I cashed it out. I bet the farm. I quit the job, which is not the advice that I typically give people to do. I did that. I did it because I was like, well, I'm gonna go ahead and do this and, you know, whatever happens, I'm gonna make mistakes. I'm gonna figure it out, but I'm gonna bounce back. But what I tell people, keep your job. Keep your job. Do a small project first. Partner with someone that knows what they're doing, but that will actually mentor you. You know, not someone that's just going to, ah, you know, I don't have time or, ah, just do this and that. No. Partner with someone that's gonna give you the game and give it to you for real. Cause that's the thing that I was afforded with my mom at the church, you know, I didn't grow up with my father, but she put me in contact with men at the church and all three of the men that were my mentors all happened to be in real estate in some form or fashion.
You know how God works. It's just.
Listen, listen, you can't, I, I won't ever argue with how God works and I always say God throws me alley-oops.
Yeah. And so he, he made that happen. He made that happen.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I know that that was even, even, you know, being broke. I never say I was poor. We were broke. Cause poor means you don't see a way out of it. I always saw a way because I had people I could look up to that looked like me that were in the industry. And that's why I say someone like me in the industry, I have to be a mentor. I was mentored. I got into it. So I have to do that. That's my responsibility. It's not just something I want to do. I have to. Because, you know, I wanna, I wanna help create other developers. I've helped a lot of people get started. There are people that make way more money than I do. But I'm happy about that. That does, I'm not a hater. I love it, you know?
Yeah. Okay. Let's talk about the Dallas Commissioner, Dallas County Commissioner. What, what, you know, and what was that one thing that threw you over the edge was like, I'm doing it. I gotta do it. Like what, what was that burning thing inside of you that said that you needed to do this?
So if I have to nail it down to one thing, cause I mean, obviously housing is a big thing for me and understanding, you know, our unhoused population, but that wasn't the thing that took me over the edge. That was the thing that, okay, I know what to do. Day one, we can put policies in place to fix it. Economic development, I know what to do. I know that we need to grow our businesses, transportation. Those, all of those three things are the three things that I'm focusing on mainly for the commissioner role because the commissioner can impact that. But the one thing, and I'm, I'm, I'm really glad you asked because it's kind of my fourth pillar. It's Sand Branch, Texas. That completely put me over the top. It's like, well, that Sand Branch, Texas.
Okay.
It, it's, it's in the Commissioner's District Three. It's in Dallas County. It's not in a absolutely rural area. It's only 20 minutes from, you know, the city of Dallas. It's 20 minutes from DeSoto. So it's, it's in the county. Now it's in what's called an ETJ, which is an extraterrestrial jurisdiction. So that means it's not a city that's chartered. It's part of the county. So the county is squarely responsible for Sand Branch, Texas.
Oh, okay.
And the issue that I have with Sand Branch, it's a free, it's a Freedman's Town. It's one of the Freedman's Towns. They do not have running water in 2023.
Right now?
Right now, right now. Town's been in there for 142 years. And our people do not have running water or sewer or trash collection. Cause a lot of people focus on the water part, which is huge, but they're burning trash in 2023.
What are they doing?
They're just burnt, they're burning their trash.
Oh my gosh.
And they have septic systems and they have wells, but the water is contaminated in their wells.
My gosh.
And right now, and for me, that, that did it. That I had enough because I said, okay, I'm a real estate developer. If I looked at that, looked at that land objectively, and, and this is what I did. I sat down with my civil engineer. I called him up. I said, I said, dude, what, this is, we can fix this easily. And we calculated the amount of money. It would only cost $8 million to fix it.
Only eight million?
Only $8 million from a county that has a $3 billion budget? $8 million to get our people water. It, it, it bothered me to the point where I had to, you know, I, I went down a rabbit hole of research and I said, okay, I have to be missing something. You know, the, the person that's been in the seat that I'm running, running for has been there since 1985.
So he knows or whoever it is knows there's no running water?
Everyone knows. And when you ask people, the kind of consensus is, oh man, they still don't have water? Because it's been so buried, but you've had Algeriza out there. You've had big, you know, news stories out there and then it just goes away. And the only response is, well, they just need to move. That's ridiculous. Can you imagine me coming to your house and saying, hey, you know what? Something's broken at your house that I can fix. And I say, no, no, Ms. Marva, you need to just move.
Just move.
Yeah. That's the solution.
So sad. So then I wonder, I wonder how many more district or counties or cities or places like that where it's happening, right? Like where there's no run, this guy is, I'm, I can, I bet you there's more.
Yes. So it's, it's called an infrastructure desert. And there are places, I'm actually building a development, I'm doing a development that's in the city. Now get this, this is in the city. It's off of I-45 in Illinois. And it's a raw piece of land, but the water and sewer, it's in the city of Dallas, but it's so far from this property that you can't just develop it. I have to get the infrastructure. And there's a whole map created. There's a professor at SMU who created this map that pointed out all of the infrastructure deserts. And most of them are south of I-30 in our neighborhoods. And so when we think about redlining, we think about banks lending to the area and the history of them not doing so. You think about developments, we don't have developers that even look like enough that look like me to say, okay, well, we can't even build here because there's no infrastructure. So I have to expand my budget. Go to the city and say, hey, we need some help to be able to even build affordable housing. So if you think about Sand Branch, it's such, it's such an acute situation. But we have many sand branches all over the place because we have vast amounts of land that no one will touch because of the expense of putting in the infrastructure.
So we're talking about lives.
Correct.
Way more, way more important.
It is so, it's so frustrating for me. Sand Branch put me over the top because we have wasted more money than that $8 million that would have helped the folks out. I put together a plan for 12.5 million because part of that, that 4.5 million is to make sure their utilities, utility bills are paid for, for the next 10 years for those 200 families that are there. Because again, the idea is even when they fix it, now you're gonna send people a new bill. It's gonna be extremely expensive upfront. So we have to offset those costs because these folks should have had water.
Yeah.
And sewer and trash a long time ago.
That's right.
And, and to me, I'm like, that's something, my civil engineer, engineer and I, we mapped out the solution in 30 minutes. 30 minutes.
So I'm sure that's something you're gonna share, like your message that you're getting out when you run and you're campaigning, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that has to be a huge part of your message that you're giving.
It will be, it will be.
Well, I'm excited about you running because you have a lot of great ideas. You have a lot of great solutions to problems. And I think that's who we need to have as a commissioner in, in more than just Dallas, but all over, someone who has the solution to the problem, who's really gonna put the action in it. You could talk about it all. But if you're not gonna do anything about it, then it's null and void, right? You can talk about it, but what's the action that you're gonna put behind it? So, yeah. So what, before we get out of here, go ahead and give one last shout out to this, this commissioner seat that you're running for. Like what do you want these people to walk away knowing today?
So one thing I want people to know for Dallas County Commissioner, District Three, I want people to know that one, I'm looking out for the district specifically because it's a lot of black and brown folks in that district that have been left behind when it comes to leadership. Also, there's a multicultural group in that district, but then when the solutions that we're looking at, the housing, the economic development, the But then when the solutions that we're looking at, the housing, the economic development, the transportation. That raises the tide for the entire county. And I want people to understand that it's not just about District Three. We're looking at the entire county to make sure that we're successful. And what I want people to take away is that. We are providing solutions, just like you mentioned. We're not here to argue about what happened in the past. We know what happened. You, we can put the results up. I want people to see the actual results, not rhetoric. But I want people to focus on, okay, how do we collaborate to solve these problems? And I want people to know, day one. We have policies already written now that when we enter office. I'll be submitting the policy to the other commissioners so that we can vote on them. So we'll have several policies. So this is not someone who just woke up one day and said, I think I wanna run for office. No, we're prepared. We're prepared to lead. We have the acumen. We have the experience. And notice I say we. Because it's not just me, it's all of us and we need all of us. And so we're building a table so that everyone can eat.
Oh, I love it. I love it. If I lived in Dallas County, I would be voting for you. So that's a fact.
Thank you.
So anyway, we'll follow you. We're gonna be following you. We wanna see your success and we, we can't wait to see. You know, you in that step into that position and really start making changes in people's lives and giving back the way you've always done. I think that, you know. Being a believer of God, you know, he sees all and he knows all. So what's meant to be will, will be. So thank you for being here. Can you tell people how we can follow you on all social media sites?
Yes, yes. It's real simple. It's Derek for Dallas. So D E R E K F O R. D A L L A S. I'm on all platforms. Everything is Derek for Dallas. So follow me, you know, link is in the bio on Instagram. You can get to every social media. And our website is W W W dot Derek for Dallas dot com. So. Follow me, follow the journey and jump in as a volunteer. You can live anywhere and help us volunteer. To put the future into this seat.
All right, this is good. Congratulations. I'd love to see, you know, our culture thriving. And I believe that's what you're doing and that you're gonna make a difference one way or the other. So that's all that matters. And so you guys get on board with Derek. Go follow him at Derek for Dallas on all social media sites. Go vote, 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 vote. When it's time to vote, follow him, follow his progress. Um, and with that said, we're gonna go for now, but remember, respect yourself, respect each other. God bless.